Okay, welcome to the St. Louis County Planning Commission Virtual Public Hearing. This meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. I'm Wayne Hillsinger, Chairman of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I would like to introduce Jacob Trimble, Acting Director of Planning and the planners assigned to tonight's petition. At the request of petitioner PC 25-22 Jeremy King, the watering bowl has been withdrawn. The Commission will still hear PC 24-22 R&amp;B Rising Star Development Center LLC tonight. Excuse me. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petition at an executive meeting in September. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within two weeks of this meeting will be distributed to the Planning Commissioners in their executive meeting agenda packet. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the County Council, who has the responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning Department staff will show photos of the petition site. Then the petitioner will present the request. They will be allotted 15 minutes. Then persons in favor, in opposition, or with concern will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Please note you may only speak one time. To indicate you wish to speak, click the raise hand icon to the right of your name on the participant list. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or seconding presentations. After all opposition speakers have spoken, only the petitioner will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After the meeting concludes, a poll will appear allowing you to indicate whether you are in favor, in opposition, or with concern. This is not a vote and is not binding on the Commission or the County Council. The purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. And with that, we'll hear PC 24-22.
Good evening. This is PC 24-22, R&amp;B Rising Star Development LLC. This is a request for a conditional use permit in the R3 to a tract size of 3.24 acres, location of the south side of Redmond Road, approximately 900 feet west of Bell Fountain Road. And that was R&amp;B Rising Star Development Center LLC, my apologies. You can see here it's in North County in the Spanish Lake area, just south of Redmond Road. Here is a land use map illustrating the property in that shaded kind of quasi-trangular section in the middle. It's a budding, the former Trinity High School, which is now vacant, and the Twilman Elementary School. It's near an assisted living center across the street from a church and a mortuary. And of special note, about a little less than a quarter mile due east is the Spanish Lake Community Association Office. Outside of these commercial and institutional uses, we find the surrounding parcels mostly made up of single-family residences. Here's an aerial with the property encircled in red. Now, we're going to go through some photos. This is facing north across Redmond Avenue from the site. This is facing northeast, once again across Redmond toward a neighboring mortuary. This is now facing east down Redmond Avenue. This is facing east toward Twilman Elementary School, which we saw in that land use map previously. This is facing south into the site. This is on the eastern side of the property facing south. These are athletic fields due south. This is facing southwest towards the outbuilding from the petitioner's property. This is the southern entrance into the property. This is now facing northwest toward Redmond Avenue. You can see another smaller outbuilding just outside this parcel. Facing west towards the former Trinity High School. This is another western entrance, so we're facing east now. This is another eastern photo. It's a relatively large site, so we took multiple photos of the eastern side. And now we'll listen to the petitioner.
Petitioner?
Jackie, are you going to bring up the PowerPoint? Or I see Reverend Brown is on now. Reverend Brown, are you there?
He's muted. Can you unmute him, Mel? Are you able to?
Yeah.
Reverend Brown?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you bring up the PowerPoint presentation?
I was going to make you the presenter and then you'll be able to share your screen.
Not a problem.
Okay, so I just made you the presenter, so at the bottom by your mute button, you'll have to click Share and then click PowerPoint or whatever you have the presentation in.
Okay.
And then I've not, I see Jackie's here, but I've not been able to, I heard her when she joined, but I can't hear her anymore.
Okay, Jackie, get yourself off of mute. Okay. That's interesting. I'm not even able to find it now. Melissa, do we not have it loaded on your end?
Do you have it open on your desktop? Your presentation?
No, I don't. I thought they would have it on the system.
Oh, you'll have to open it. You'll have to open it up.
Okay. This is interesting.
I can bring it up, Reverend Brown, if that's easier.
It's not too much of an imposition.
Sure. You'll just have to let me know when to advance the slide. Okay, is this up for everyone?
Yes.
Okay, Reverend Brown, you can go ahead and just let me know when to advance the slide.
I think I've lost you all myself. I'm too vocal, but your audio, but I don't seem to have you.
Reverend Brown, can you hear me?
I can hear you, ma'am. I just can't get back into the system.
Are you, oh, okay. So on your bottom bar, WebEx looks like a sort of, I think it's like a blue circle.
Right. That's what I'm trying to open back up. Okay, there we go. As we said, this is R&amp;B Rising Star Development Center. We've been in existence for the last 20 years. This new initiative have started back in 2018 at the address located at Chambers Road. What it is that we would like to do is have the opportunity to extend this project from the Chambers address to the 1650 Redmond Road that we just acquired back in June of this year. Okay. Many people want to know what charter yields is really serves children from the ages of six weeks all the way up to 13 years of age at our particular facility. And what it is that we have been doing is running three shifts between the hours of six o'clock all the way to six o'clock in the morning. What that means is that we have roughly about 164 children that we run in our first shift, which is from six o'clock till three o'clock. And then during our second shift, which is from three o'clock to 11 o'clock, we handle a lot of family members that have jobs and that work at hospitals and various nursing homes. And then we also provide care for our children, for our families from the ages of six weeks all the way up to 13 between the hours of 11 to seven o'clock the next morning. So around the clock, we have roughly about 37 different staff that we have working for us, providing quality care to our children. We are licensed by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and we are also are members of the National Association of Education of Young Children, which is one of the larger organizations in the United States that provide quality care to children. They also regulate and provide the standards which we are to operate and provide the type of care that we provide for children. R&amp;B Rising Star Development Center is not only a charter center that provide quality care to children between the ages of six weeks, but we also consider ourselves to be joint partners with parents that we've known through the years that we are now working and providing care for generations of families that we've served for the last 20 years. R&amp;B Rising Star Development provides care to children in the community as well as in the neighborhood. And we also are partners with the various schools, public schools, that we provide before and after care to a lot of these same children that are attending regular school during the normal course of a day. R&amp;B Rising Star Development is early intervention program in that we also have in addition to providing care to our children between the ages of six weeks all the way up to three, four, and five-year-olds. We have what is known as the First Step Program. So any children that may have developmental delays or have need of physical therapy, occupational therapy, as well as speech therapy, we have an intervention program where we have clinicians that come in and that work with our children in addition with our teaching staff to evaluate and to assess those various children that may have developmental delays. Our early childhood education works at its expanding. Demographically speaking, we are considered the pre-K program to a lot of different schools that have and need someone that could help mainstream children into the regular schools. We consider ourselves a pre-K program in that we prepare children for the regular school that they're going to be attending in September as well as November. With a lot of charter centers during this time, we have families that we have schools that census that normally changes and it decreases in September and August. But fortunately, we've been blessed to have an influx to where we stay constant with the number of children that we provide quality care for. Because what it is that we're doing is not only providing care before and after school, but we also provide occur during the tenure of six to eight hours and even 10 hours in some cases to a lot of families that otherwise would be misplaced in this place to no fault of their own. We have, we pride ourselves in what we do and that we've been doing it. We have a passion for serving not only our community, but for serving our children. So we have an overarching responsibility where we provide transportation service for a whole lot of families that live within a five to 10-mile radius of our center. So in addition to providing a care to children in the Hazelwood School District area, we also provide in St. Louis County. And any families that may have transportation or need transportation within a five to 10-mile radius, we have their six o'clock in the morning all the way to about seven o'clock in the evening, picking up and dropping off before and after, as well as providing transportation service for those families that may be on the link or may be on the bus stop or may not be able to provide the transportation to or from home. So we provide that in addition to providing care and nurturing and teaching our children. What we have, go ahead, questions, comments? What we have in addition to that, we have a Spanish program as well as we have linguistic programs in that we have teachers that are well-versed in providing not only linguistic skills, but we also work with a lot of bilingual language-type families. We have different, we have a multicultural of families that we provide care for and have been for the last several years. We are very committed in current and providing quality care for not only the majority of the children in the community and the neighborhoods, but we also provide and a passion for providing care for our families that we've grown acquainted with. In fact, they're our extended family. In addition to providing care to children in the community and in the neighborhood, we still continue to provide children, care to children in St. Louis County as well as St. Louis City in some cases because what they begin with us, they stay with us, not only for months and years, but like I said before, we're providing even third-generation families that we've cared for for the last 20 years. What it is that, as I shared before, we have about 37 different staff members that we provide not only gainfully employed, but we have families that have created a relationship with our teacher staff as well as with our curriculum and our program. They like what we do. And what it is that we're not a certified babysitting service. We have a structured curriculum for all of our children from the ages of two all the way up to five years of age. We promote positive relationships among all of our children, staff, and adults. What it is that we feel that we are the extended family of those families that we do provide care with. People really respect and trust the work that we do as well as the relationship that we have with not only the staff, but the children as well as the community. Children really enjoy not only attending our program, but they, sometimes they don't want to go home. And they're glad when their parents come, but at the same time, they really look forward to engaging and really appreciating the care and the love that we give them on a day-to-day basis. It's not something that we do because we have to do it. It's something that we do because we have a passion for doing what we do do. As I said before, we have structured curriculum for all of our children from the ages of two all the way up to five, six, and seven years old. So that when the children are ready to go to school, a lot of times, with the majority, vast majority of the children that we provide care for, they're not only able to bypass kindergarten, but they're able to be mainstreamed into the regular school setting. Each child that we provide care for is not only tracked, but we assess and evaluate them on a one-on-one basis. As I said before, for all of our children, we have a competency-based type evaluation that we do with a lot of just to see if there's any developmental delays. And if the children that we do have in our organization may be, may require some type of early intervention, such as the First Step Programs. We have parents as teachers that's also involved with reading and writing and assisting our staff and helping us to be more proficient than we do. And that's why we said what we have is a quality program. Our program is well-informed and we try to inform all of our parents on a day-to-day basis of everything that goes on during the course of a day for all of our children, from our infants all the way to our school age and our preschool. For our children, as far as our toddlers and our infants go, we let the parent know every time that child has changed, we let them know the different meals that the child have, how the child performed during the course of the day. And we give that parent an assessment on a regulatory basis so that if they have something that breaks out during the course of the night or they have to take their child to the doctor or to the hospital, they have a statement signed from the charter center as far as the cure that that child may have had that day and what concerns that may have arisen during the course of the day that we share with their parents. We are stickler on health and with this last pandemic that we had, we had some precautionary methods that were taken when we provide care for our children. As you know, the CDC requires us to have all our children assessed and cared for. And I'm glad to say that the majority, if not all of our, vast majority have had their COVID shots. And it was just on a recommendation of the safeguard, not only the current safety of all of our children, but knock on wood, praise God, we only had three cases of the pandemic and the COVID in the last two years. And these were well-documented and noted. And if it ever happened within the departments, we had to close that one department down for a week or two. And we had to sanitize accordingly. So we do take precautionary method to make sure all of our children are properly immunized as well as a careful on a regulatory basis. Our staff was required to not only have training on an annual basis, but they're required to have 12 competency-based clock hours that is measured by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. This is a requirement for our licensing that all of our staff and all of our directors and everyone that provides care for our children not only have immunization, not only have physicals, not only have TB testing, but also have the education and the competencies to provide quality care and to educate our children. Every staff that we have is CDA certified. That's where they're certified to provide charter. And we also are working currently on accreditation to make sure that we're able to provide a more competency, high-quality type program for children that are not only in our area, but children that we provide care for. Families, as we said before, we feel real good about it because we're extended families. Anything that happens during the course of a day, we share with the families. But at the same time, we consider ourselves to be partners with the families in that there's a lot of things that we do on a regulatory basis as well as things that we do such as field trips. And we go into the circles of the various festivals or different recreational activities. We invite the parents to come and visit with us as well as to share with us on a lot of these field trips. Parents, we have an open door policy where parents can come in and not only monitor the behavior of the classrooms as well as the children, but they're welcome and invited to come in and sit in anytime they so desire or want to. We have an open door policy and we want families to feel welcome and know the type of care and service that they're getting even in the absence when they're not there with their children. Community relationships, we invite the various fire departments, various police departments, as well as the various auxiliaries and the businesses that are local to us. We invite them to come in and spend a day with us so that not only the families can know about the various businesses in the communities, but at the same time, the business in the community can know about us. Like I said before, we have a joint partnership in this so that they know exactly who we are and what we are as well as what we do. All community businesses and partners are welcome. None of us are as small as all of us. That's why we invite everyone to be part of us and to know exactly what it is that we're doing. We've even gotten involved with some of the neighborhood watch in the community, and we haven't even opened up yet. But we want them to know our presence, want them to know what our plans and objectives are. And we wanted to know if they accept that or if they will really appreciate what it is that we're trying to do. Many of our neighborhoods and community have already said that they feel that it would be an enhancement to the community. Physical environment, we try to provide a structural, clean, open, candid type of program, not only to the public, but to our children and to our families. As I said before, we're licensed by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They're required to come in at least four times a year. Two of those visits are unannounced and the other two are normally announced. In addition to an annual safety inspection that is required from the Department of Health as well as the Fire Department, the State of Missouri Fire Department, as well as the Health and Sanitation that is required to do an annual inspection to make sure that we are past and they were up to par. And there's an evaluation that they do with us. Any glitches or any impediments or any non-compliance that they may experience from R&amp;B, we have to correct that and we have a limited time to correct that and make those enhancements. We invite and welcome any time that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education comes in to do this evaluation because we feel like it's a report court to make sure that we're doing what we have vowed to do and where we have been licensed to do. As you know, charter programs that are licensed is a voluntary thing. It's something that we choose to do, not something that we have to do. But at the same time, if we're going to be providing quality care and we want it to be rated and we want families to be comfortable with the level of care that we provide, we choose to be licensed. What we be able to share with you later on in the presentation is also the demographics. And you'll be able to see the structure and the various classrooms that we, where we plan to provide care to our children. Each classroom has 10 to 15 children. And this information that you'll see before you is our pre-K as well as our infant to child ratio and demographics of those 164 children that we're currently licensed for. With the additional classrooms that this new facility will be able to house, we plan to provide care for 189 to 200 children. And for each of our classrooms, as I've said before, we're currently licensed for And for each of our classrooms, as I've said before, we're currently licensed for about twenty-seven, well eighteen infants, but it's going to grow to twenty-seven. To where we have one staff to every four infants and for our toddlers, we have. One staff to every six toddlers that'll be from the ages of twenty-four up to about uh, thirty-six months. And then for our preschoolers, which is three-year-olds all the way to four and five-year-olds, we have one to ten. And for our four and five-year-olds is one to ten and for our school age is one to fifteen. So what it is, we're very uh, comprehensive in the quality curve as well as with the staff's child ratio. That we have is supervising all of our children as well as we. Have in providing and making sure each and every child get the individual training and assistance that we need. What you see before you is our cafeteria. That we uh, provide lunch for our children as well as breakfast, as well as snacks. And all of this is done in our cafeteria that houses about maybe. A hundred and fifty uh, children at a time, but we only do about fifty children that we feed. All the time that we have a commercial kitchen along with uh, the uh, professional hood and uh, we 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 feel that is very uh, very comprehensive in that we have certified cooks. That are also uh, required to have a certification. And uh, this is done on a three to five-year basis. For all of our staff and everyone that's going to be providing food to our children and we wear gloves and we wear uh, hernets. And uh, we also have our masks, we wear the face masks, it's covered. What you see on the left side is the classroom, that this what this is is the corridors. On the left side as well as the same quarter on the right side for both sides of our building and the. Cafeteria that you see is right in the middle of the uh, facility. That way, the additional area that you're going to be, that we, it's going to be phase two of our program. Will be for the accredited portion for our school age, so we're going to have in addition to our preschool. We hope to have the first pre-K program in the state of Missouri to where we're able to provide pre-K for about. Maybe fifty additional children. Which is like I said before, phase two, but we're currently licensed for one sixty-four, which should grow to a hundred and eighty-nine. We have about ten children to fifteen children that's will be allowed in each classroom along with. Not only a certified teacher, but we also have a teacher's aide. So for each of our classrooms, we still have one to three and one to four for our infant areas in many of our classrooms. As we shared before, we have about ten classrooms, this is the section. On the uh, at the lower portion that we're going to occupy initially going into the program. And we plan to also utilize our library as well as our multi-purpose classrooms. As well as the art classrooms where our children are allowed to go in and have art during the course of a day. As well as free time in the multi-purpose classrooms as well as quiet time in the library area also. Okay Melissa, if you can go to the license what's for again, you'll see we're currently licensed, you can blow that up, we're currently licensed for a hundred and sixty-four. Yeah, what you have, it shows that we are twenty-four hours, which is six to six. As I said before, we have three different shifts. We have uh, shift one is from six to six and then we have shift two, which is from three to eleven. And from eleven to seven is a shift, a third shift, what you have. You have the number of children that we're licensed for currently per age and per group as we said. For the uh, six weeks, all the way up to twelve and eighteen months. We're licensed for uh, eighteen and from twenty-four months up to uh, thirty-six is uh, twenty-four that we have. And then we have uh, the balance in our preschool and we're licensed for I believe about thirty. A school age currently, which is, which is going to change in the next uh, two to three weeks. Due to the before and after school, but we still plan to provide care for about maybe forty. Uh, school age children between the ages of six, I'm sorry, between the times of six o'clock. To eight o'clock, which is the time that we transport them to school and then from three o'clock to six o'clock, we're providing aftercare. Questions, comments, concerns?
Okay, commissioners, any questions?
I have a couple Wayne.
Go ahead.
Oh, this is Ballard. How many employees do you currently have and how many do you plan to have? I guess I know that's driven by the population that you're going to get.
We currently have thirty-seven, sir.
Thirty-seven? And I didn't see any sleeping accommodations in your uh?
We have sleep accommodations, we have cots for all of our childrens as well as sheets that we have to provide. On a day-to-day basis for all of our children. Each child have their own individual cot with their name on it as well as with the cot sheets. And their own bedding, they are allowed to bring their own uh, blanket if they so desire it. But if not, we provide blankets for them also.
Okay, so you have the second and third shift, you have uh, are those same carts you use for? Those two shifts or have they changed or?
No, as we have a hundred and sixty-four children that we're licensed for, as I said before, each child has his own individual cot with their name on it. So whoever's there for the third shift or who's ever there for the second shift. They will have their own sleeping apparatus.
Okay, you mentioned uh, vehicles that you pick up uh, uh, the children from school. Also provide transportation to the adults that uh, within a five to ten mile radius, how many vehicles do you have?
We currently have uh,
Three of them, it's three.
Three different classrooms, but we currently have what, twenty, twenty-seven?
I think he said vehicles.
No, 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 he's asked for children or vehicles.
No, she's right.
We have three transient, fifteen passenger transit vans.
Fifteen passengers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I have, Wayne.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, one more, is this uh, this R and B, is that a standalone or is it supported by a particular church or Reverend Brown? Since you got the title there, I thought I asked that question, it's begging to be answered.
Let let me, let me say that this is an outgrowth of uh, of our church initiative, yeah, okay? In that what it is uh, we provide uh, care and we've been connected for the last uh, thirty years for real, this is not the only childcare center that we have, okay? So we kind of like have an overarching responsibility, not only to try provide care for our parents. But a lot of the people that are members of our church are members of our organization and our childcare center also. So uh, no, this is an independent organization, but it's an outgrowth from our church. And the R and B is uh, in uh, is patronage to our parents of uh, one of our co-firms. That's Brenda as well as Raglan, uh, that was our our parents and so a memory of them, that's what we've named it, R and B.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay, this is uh, Cunningham, I do have a question. Um, uh, you mentioned that you did acquire the property, I think last year, is that correct?
No, sir, this year, June twenty-seven.
Okay.
Or recently bought for three months, it feels like last year, but it was just this year.
Yeah, okay, I understand, uh, so have you done any renovations to the property?
We haven't done anything, sir, but cleaned it up, got it ready to receive our children. We realized that we can't even occupy it until we get approved from you guys.
Understood, understood, so uh, do you plan to do anything with the outside of the building?
None at all.
Okay, everything will stay the same?
Like Bob Evans, we wouldn't change a thing.
Okay, okay, that's all.
Anyone else?
Yeah, this is Bill, uh, Sneed.
Yeah, Bill.
Uh, I just uh, I I may have missed something, but. The 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 building that you showed, is that the building that's on the subject property now?
Yes, sir.
The layout, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and how many children will you have uh, uh, assigned to that facility as opposed to the one that's on Chambers, I think you said?
A hundred and eighty-nine to two hundred, we're currently at one sixty-four.
In total?
In total.
Right, so how many would be in this facility?
Two hundred. Believe it or not, we're we're going from one school to another school.
Well, you're you're closing the one on Chambers.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, okay, that's what I was missing, thank you.
Yeah, we're the, we're the old stuff with the storming school on Chambers, which is much, little smaller than what we have now.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Look a lot better too.
Oh, thank you. That's very true.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Wayne, just Keith here, just a question for Reverend. Uh, the lighting, is it, you're going to have a little bit more lighting just so when the the parents come to?
Sir, in fact, we plan to have some additional lighting installed, so when parents pick them up at night. It's going to be well-lit parking lot and it's also monitored, now what you didn't know and didn't see. We have uh, cameras in each, in every classroom. So we can monitor everything that goes on not only throughout the parking lot. But on each and every classroom so that we know everything that's going on at all times. And our directors and our administrators also have access to those by way of phone pad.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Anyone else? Seeing none, uh, Mel, you want to see if we have any speakers?
Sure, so if you'd like to make a a comment or ask a question, please click the raise hand button next to your name on the attendee list. If you don't see it, you can send a message in the chat to the generic host, um, and I can unmute you. We do have one question in the chat and I apologize Reverend if you just addressed this, um, but her question is about the security procedures.
We have. Twenty-four hour security, we have uh, our alarm system is tied in not only to the police department, but as well as to the fire department. And as I said before, we have access to every square foot. Outside and inside of our building. We can monitor from our home, we can monitor from our office, everything that's going on at the facility. Anytime of the day.
And then we have one speaker CJ, you're unmuted, please identify yourself and make your comment.
This is CJ, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, well, I have a property that butts up against uh, the properties that are being discussed uh, now, so. Uh, let me kind of run through this thing, I I just want to make sure that this is a proposal and not kind of. A foregone conclusion because I see people as of thirty minutes ago going in and out of the building, uh, they put up a fence. So I'm I'm trying to figure out like what's going on in the proposal, it seemed to go between the location that is current. Uh, on Chambers and the location that is there because my kids went to Christ Light, so I know exactly what the inside looks like. And some of the pictures from the proposal were of remodeling in the inside, so I wanted to make sure that. That uh, I don't know how this licensing thing goes, but it seems like work is being done in the facility. Uh, but we're having a meeting now that's supposed to be a proposal of. A possible childcare center that is that is being there, it's almost like, it to me, it seems the cart is before the horse, uh.
What you may experience.
Let me finish, um, uh, and I don't need to be rude, I know I just have a few more minutes and I and I do applaud all the good work that you all are doing with with children, but. Uh, like I say, I have a a property owner that is here, I had another question about is the ball field behind? And the field next to the school part of this? And then my final uh, question was about the the traffic, you said it was going to be a twenty-four hour facility. Uh, a- as I said, my children went to school there, it was a carefully orchestrated. Flow of traffic that they had to do each and every day to get the kids out of the school onto Redmond because unfortunately, some people come up and down Redmond. Uh, uh, driving very unsafe, trying to see what kind of system is in place. Uh, for that, if this facility is approved. Uh, by the, I guess the the planning commission and then voted in by the uh, the the same was uh, county council, thank you.
CJ, I'm glad that you said that we have uh, crossing guards. That escort our children on and off the bus, they're supervised or off our, our van system, they're supervised. Not only by the staff, but also by the transportation manager that oversees that. But as a safeguard, uh, something that we may consider, because I didn't, I didn't believe that it was that much traffic. We may put up a fence just to safeguard uncovered traffic because things do happen, accidents do happen and yeah, you're right. That's something that we would take into consideration even before we open up. So uh, and i- if there's any kind of work that's being done, it would be exterior, it would be only interior, but that wouldn't be done until we get it approved, sir.
Well, right now they on in there cleaning up, sweeping up, mopping up, wiping down.
Okay.
I don't see any other hands at this.
Um, I think you've answered everything Reverend, uh, unless you had something to add?
Wayne got one more, this is Bill, I have one more question.
Go ahead, Bill.
Uh, are you going to have uh, somebody at the door so that uh, you don't have these wackos coming in and? Doing the crazy things they've been doing at school lately?
Yes, sir, in fact, we do have uh, we have guard at the door, but not only that. Our doors are locked and you have to be buzzed in and have to identify yourself in order to get in. As I said before, we have cameras and we have phone pads for everyone that comes in and comes out. We have a new system also that exists by way of a kiosk where the parents have to sign the children in as well as send them out. So, yeah, uh, we very apprehensive about. The care, at the level of care that we provide to our parents as well as to our children. And no, 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 nobody's going to come in, that's not, that doesn't belong there, that's not part of the roster, that's not. On our system, in fact, there's a, when you sign your per child in. Your picture goes not only to the system, but it goes to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And it's only these parents that are allowed to sign the children in and send them out.
Oh, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you, anyone else? Seeing none, uh, this concludes this hearing and we appreciate uh, the presentation Reverend.
Thank you again for having us.
Absolutely, um, with that Jacob, anything for the good?
I don't believe, uh, so, uh, chairman, so I think we're ready to go.
Alright, with that, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed, I have it seven zero and we are adjourned, thank you everyone.
Thanks everyone.
Have a nice evening.
Ah, you too now.
Good care.